I'd like to call the, uh, call to order the school committee meeting for March 11th, 2019. Do all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. Listing of bad is on the agenda of those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This media, the meeting is being videotaped for cable. We'd like to welcome Devin McCarthy to our meeting tonight as our super rep. Welcome.
Hello.
All right. I'd like to get approval of our meeting notes from February 11th, 2019. Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then an approval of our meeting minutes from the February 25th, the budget meeting.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Superintendent's update.
So the first thing is school choice applications. You know that our applications closed at the end of February and currently as of today, we have 120 on time applications. Some people have put applications in after the date and if there's space down the road, then they could be put into the mix, the lottery and stuff. But our first, um, order of business would be to just do the people that came in on time. So we now are going through the grades to figure out where we have openings and then we will start going through the applications as far as if we have more applications than we have spaces, then we'll conduct lotteries for those grades. If, if there's openings and we don't have more, then we'll just let them in and we'll be starting to do that and then we send out letters either way. So people who put in an application, you'll either get a letter stating that a grade is closed or it's a grade that is opened and only siblings could fit in, or it's open and we conducted a lottery, or you're accepted. So there's a lot of different letters. We'll also be setting out, sending out letters to kindergarten and first grade that we don't do anything with school choice until the, until June, until after kindergarten registration and all that stuff. So we don't have, so that, that's where we are. It will take, it usually takes us a good two to four weeks to get through everything because of so many different things. But people find out in the next few weeks which category they're in. So today we were going through all that stuff. The next update is the winter athletic update. So I usually like to at the end of the season go through the different achievements of our athletic teams. So first we have girls' basketball, played well and improved each day. It's the second consecutive undefeated regular season, team qualified for the tournament, and it was their ninth consecutive Mayflower League comprehensive championship. Very successful through the season. Every player, whether they started or came off the bench, contributed to their success. Mr. Barrett says, "I'm proud of how the, how the girls work and they are constantly playing for each other." JV girls' basketball, it was a good season. The team went 16-2 and one of their losses was only a one-point game. They were close, hard fought games, and the girls played hard until the end. Girls worked hard and improved their skills a lot since the beginning of the season. Were able to run some plays by the end of the season. Varsity boys' basketball had a successful season. They qualified for the state tournament with 11 wins on the season, eight of which came on their home court. Boys worked really well together and embraced the team mentality. There's a strong group of players returning for next season and they're only graduating two seniors this year. Jonathan Widom and Steven Gabriel were selected the All-Star team and Jack Shea will be competing in the Mayflower three-point shooting competition. And Coach Antonio was selected as the Mayflower League Comprehensive Coach of the Year. JV boys' basketball, junior varsity team had a great season this year. They worked hard during practices, pushing themselves and each other to improve as basketball players. As a team, they were able to string together some great performances and win a good amount of games this season. Freshman boys' basketball. This was the first year for our freshman boys' basketball team because we had so many boys interested in playing basketball and it allowed to keep all of the freshmen that wanted to play this year. They were competitive in all the games and had a lot of fun playing basketball this season. Their record for the season was 6-6. Gymnastics. The Bridgewater, West Bridgewater gymnastics team won the Cranberry League with a record of 10-0. Steve Cudworth was voted Cranberry League Coach of the Year and the team qualified for both the MIA South Sectional Tournament and the state tournament and they received second place this weekend at New England High School Championships. So very successful again. Boys' ice hockey. The Southeastern West Bridgewater BP Boys Ice Hockey Team, they won the vocational state championship for the third year in a row. First co-op team to win a Division II MIA tourney game by defeating Sandwich 4-3. And this was also their third straight Mayflower League championship with a record of 12, 0, and 0, and an overall record of 18, 5, and 1. Girls' ice hockey. This was the first year of the girls' ice hockey co-op with East Bridgewater and the season was a huge success. The team was named Webb for West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater. They had a record of 6, 6, and 2. And believe it or not, they started out with half of their players not having much experience with skating and playing ice hockey because some of the kids couldn't skate at all. By the end of the season, they were all skating with such confidence. It was exciting to watch the girls grow, not only as ice hockey players, but as a team. A big shout out to Sarah Eaton, who was their goalie, and Sarah had never played goalie before and she crushed it. Girls' middle school basketball ended their season with an 8-4 record. The girls showed great sportsmanship teamwork and determination throughout the season. Boys' middle school basketball had success. They were 10 wins and two losses and all 15 players participated in every game and mostly with equal playing time. Parents were very supportive and players all improved. Boys' indoor track. It was kind of a roller coaster ride with many big ups by breaking three school records and having all boys medal at the states. The athletes were committed to making strides in their track and field careers this year and many of the future stars shined bright. And girls' indoor track had an excellent season, finishing 5-2. Three athletes qualified and participated in the Division V state meet. A number of students broke school and personal records. One athlete from West Bridgewater was chosen to represent the Mayflower League at the MIA recognition breakfast. While the league championship ended up being canceled due to weather, the girls' team had already made a positive impact during the regular season and should be very proud. So you can see, overall, very, we don't have as many sports in the winter season, but overall, very successful season for the winter season. And the next update is Friday night, we had Mr. WB. I was there. It was really a great show. Devin did a great job, you and your sister singing, and I know you've done a lot since seventh grade, helping out with it, but I thought it was really successful. Mark, I don't know if you want to talk about it. Andrew LeBlanc came out the winner, but honestly, I think every boy was a winner that, that was involved because it takes a lot of guts to get up there and do what those kids do.
Absolutely.
They were, they're awesome. They had so much fun. They, they practiced so hard and so long and it's a real commitment to get those kids, and also the ladies, the senior girls did an amazing job. And it's all due to the help of all the parents we get coming in. Mrs. Flynn from the school, but they really put in hour after hour and it shows. It's a great show. Community loves it. The kids love it and we look forward to it every year. So great.
Great.
Just a huge thank you to the women, also the, the ones that are going out, that are retiring. So what was your mom?
My mom actually will be staying one more year.
Oh, she is going to stay. That's awesome.
She's going to stay one more year.
A bigger shout out than that. Exactly. So it was Mrs. Puddy?
Uh, Mrs. Boyd and Mrs. McGinnis.
McGinnis. So they just have done such an amazing job. They've brought that program, you know, that event, you know, it's just amazing. It was their fifth year, right?
It really is. And they want to pass it on, you know, to people who are just as dedicated and know their role.
It's great. It's great. So that's awesome that your moms stayed there. Good.
Thank you, Devin. Okay, on to business. Inclusion Matters update.
Yes. So I do have an update. Inclusion Matters is proud to have established a partnership with local CPACs, including the Eastern CPAC, and we've been partnering with the Eastern CPAC for a series of two meetings led by the Federation of Children with Special Needs this month. A presentation on the Basic Rights of Special Ed Families on May 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 here in the Learning Commons, and a presentation on designing an IEP for parents on April 2nd from 6:30 to 8:30 at the HH Richardson School in Northeastern. And we want to thank, we want to continue to support families with special needs in our district by sending them to conferences and providing other resources for them. In addition, we hope to provide small grants to West Bridgewater teachers during the next school year to provide inclusion education materials that they need. To that end, our Board of Directors set a fundraising goal at the last board meeting and we are launching two fundraisers this spring, a night out at Barrett's and a raffle there on May 21st, and a May raffle for priority seating at the high schools graduation. We want to thank Dr. Oakley for her support of the graduation seat battle. Will be a fun one.
People fight over those.
That's outside.
Yeah, the Basic Rights is actually on March 20th, not May 20th.
Oh, okay.
It's this month.
All right. Okay. Good to know.
Thank you, Mrs. Hume.
Yep.
The 2019-2020 school calendar voting issue. Do we have any discussion on the, on the calendar?
I did have one suggestion that came out of my house that I needed to share, and that was the day after Halloween, having that day off. And I, I did bring it up for a couple of reasons. One, it's something I've heard the students say in my house and others before about how they wish they didn't have to go to school the day after Halloween. I've also heard it, not necessarily from our educators in our district, but I've heard it in general from educators, that the day after Halloween is difficult to educate the students because they're in a kind of an excited environment. But it would mean we would need to change something in our calendar.
It would also mean we would need to add a day of school at the end of the year. I'm not sure if we're ready to add a day of school at the end of the year. Does anybody else have any comments?
At least it's a Friday, so then they'll have the weekend.
Yeah. What are we going to do next year? You're going to have Monday off?
Well, no, next year, actually Halloween is on a Friday, so you won't have the day after Halloween.
What are we going to do the year after that? I mean, it's just, we have to think about.
Well, next year it will be, it's a leap year, I believe, so it'll be on the weekend.
Yeah. It's a domino. Yeah. So what days are we going to, we always going to take a day off in the middle of the week after Halloween?
I would think it would be a good idea. That's why I brought it up. I have, I felt this in my household in years past.
I definitely do not want us adding days onto the year because you never know what winter's going to do to us.
Right.
We've been very lucky this winter.
You just jinxed us.
I did?
You just jinxed us because there's still more winter. You think I want to see more snow? I don't.
Mrs. Smith, would you like to make a motion? Or would you just like to?
I think in honor of my children, I need to make a motion to have the day after Halloween off.
Do we have a second?
But would you extend, like, how will you make that?
Okay, yeah, so.
Well, it has to be seconded and passed before we, so I'm, have a feeling, I'm not, and I won't be offended, but if it doesn't get passed here, I don't, but it, it's just something to think of. What I'd really, actually, what I'd really like to see, and I don't think this is something that we're, we're able to do this year, but I know I've heard from other districts, and I don't have any specific examples, that the, things like this, the day after, they would do like a full day in service with the teachers and they would take that opportunity to do that. Now, we don't have that in our teacher contract to have a full day in service, but if we ever were to, to have that as something that either the teachers wanted or we want it as administrators or educators or whatever it is, that may be a good day to consider because I, I know it's not an easy day to manage the, manage an educational environment.
I can tell you that, yeah, it does need, a full day PD day does need to be negotiated. And the last three negotiation cycles, we have proposed that and the teachers have shot it down.
Maybe if they know it's the day after Halloween, they might be more for it.
I doubt it.
I'm just saying. Well, I would, I would be interested to get their feedback, so.
I just, I'm just concerned about changing a policy for one year happening because next year, Halloween's on a Saturday. So I think there's a lot you have to do in order to get that one day off and I just wouldn't be in favor of it.
Well, that was kind of where I was leaning.
Right.
We need to, you know, rather than just vote on something that we're not exactly sure how it's going to affect us, I think that we need to look at what days are we always going to have a day off, which means you'll have a Monday or a Tuesday or a Wednesday or Thursday. And, you know, what effect does that have on the calendar, never mind on the teachers and the studies. I personally, I mean, it doesn't affect me and I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not against 100% or for it. All I'm thinking is that come nine o'clock at night, kids don't belong out anyway, in my eyes, on Halloween. Because nothing good's going to happen after nine o'clock. I, I lived it. All of the, all of the people that are here probably lived it. So, you know, I just, I think that they should come to school and run and bear it like we did.
Mrs. Smith?
I'll have a long talk with your kids. I know how much they love me.
No, that's fine. We don't have to pass it. I, I do, I just feel obligated because I do think it's a good idea. So I, I would not be doing myself a service if I didn't bring it up, so.
I think a little more homework, if it was done, Mrs. Smith, it could possibly be reality. But I think you have to look at it another, a little more and in a little bigger picture. So.
Right. No, I agree. I mean, I, I just, I don't think the faculty would have the same perspective as it being a teaching day as the kids do. So, I mean, I just, that's just my opinion. I think the faculty would be looking at it as it's just the day after Halloween. It's no different than another weekday. That's all. I think the kids have a different perspective than the teachers would.
I believe this year too. Did we go to school January 2nd, the afternoon yesterday? Not that that's anything different, but is it right after a holiday?
We did. Yes.
Not that that's Halloween, but.
I mean, it's not really a holiday. I'm just saying. It's not really a holiday, guys.
No, but there's also, there's only five state holidays that we're required to take off. And you're correct, Halloween is not one of them, but we celebrate other things that aren't, also aren't state holidays. So we don't, we do have some, some leniency in this. I'm not saying we have to do it. I just.
I wouldn't be opposed to it. It would be nice, but I wouldn't want to extend this full year as a day. So I could rather have them go after Halloween.
Maybe we could come a day early.
Well, actually, this calendar, we're already starting on the Monday before, teachers are starting on the Monday before Labor Day.
Monday, the 26th.
So you don't want to go in.
The Friday, the.
No.
All right. You good? Would you like to make a motion?
So I made a motion. So as long as it wasn't seconded, then we don't have to vote on it because then.
Okay. Uh, school budget.
Well, are you going to make a?
Motion to approve the as-is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you very much. We'd like to make, someone make a motion to approve the school calendar as-is. Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll go no. Just to go along with my theme.
I think it's still unanimous.
Well, majority, majority of passes definitely.
Passed by majority. Um, budget.
Okay, so this is a follow-up to the budget proposal that was done at our Budget Line by Line budget hearing, February 25th. I did give you a budget summary to follow along, but I also have some slides. So basically, at the February 25th meeting, I presented a level service budget and the level service meaning, which is what the school, the selectmen originally had asked for when they sent out their letter to all departments. So we put together a level service budget. There were a few changes in there to make it, because of our ELL population, and I talked about how we needed a .5 ELL teacher, so we made cuts in other places so that it would be one for one, so that the money would be the same, or the FTEs would be the same. And that's what I proposed here. We went through it line by line. And since that time, you had said you wanted to mull it over, think about it, but since that time, I've, I had been contacted by the Selectman, Selectman Marrera specifically, and we had a lengthy, very good conversation regarding, regarding the budget and regarding all the issues that are facing school budgets now with the increased out-of-district, out-of-district special education costs, with the increased English language learner population, all those things. So the Chapter 70 formula and how we're trying to change the Chapter 70 formula. And, and this is not just a West Bridgewater issue. These increases are everywhere and everyone is dealing with them. I just read an article the other day that Whitman Hansen has to cut $3.5 million and it's based on special education increases in ELL. It could have been, except, you know, the amount and the name of the district, the whole thing was exactly the same. So it's facing everyone and that's why people are trying, the associations, the mass association of school committees, the MTA, and the mass association of school committees and the principals organizations are all trying to fight and deal with their legislators and saying, "We need help. We need you to change these formulas." The governor proposed his own and we do have an increase in the governor's budget of 300, about $350,000. That could go towards that. Goes to the town, it could go towards that, but that's just the governor's budget. We haven't seen the House budget or the Senate budget yet and they're rarely the same. So I had a conversation with Mr. Marrera and then a conversation with Chairman Flynn, and I was asked to look at, are there any areas that we can cut from the 5.4% increase to get it lower because of the fact that when you go into the town, town only has so much money. So that's what we worked on and.
Excuse me. Did Selectman Marrera, when you spoke to him, did he, did he watch the 20, meeting on the 25th to see what we really had, you know, what we were going through? And did he mention that he'd watched the meeting and had some concerns about what we'd talked about in the meeting?
No, he did not. He read about it in the Enterprise. He, I, he didn't tell me that he watched the meeting. So I'm assume, I mean, I'm assuming he didn't because he never mentioned it.
Okay.
But he did tell me that he was reading it in the Enterprise, so I'm pretty sure that that's where he got the information. And, and the article in the Enterprise was pretty accurate to the meeting, if you read it. I mean, it's a little out of context because not all the things I presented were in there and the cuts, but the percentages and the numbers were, were accurate. So the revised budget, we cut 120,800 from the proposed level services budget because that would get us down to a 4.5% increase. Did you give them their new budgets?
Mickey has them.
Oh. Yeah. If you, so this is the corrected.
Thank you.
Budget.
Jimmy has to.
I'm sorry.
If there's an extra one, can you send one back? Okay, we send one back too.
Can you have one?
Oh, yeah, we have plenty of them.
Yeah, I'll take one for my.
Take one home to your family.
Yeah, just to have her.
Do you want to use that? If you open up to the first page, page one, that has the overview of the lines. So from line 3230, which is teaching services, there's a cut of $65,000 from teaching services. I can't give you right now specifics of what that will be, but as we get closer, we'll try to do that out of attrition. I'm not sure if some teachers that might retire, like, you know, we have to budget for them. We don't know if they're coming back. So that could be a savings. There's some teachers retiring in positions that we could just eliminate the position. This will also be some stipended positions. So it's a teacher that gets a stipend to do another job. Some of those stipended positions could be cut. So I don't have specifics on what those cuts will look like yet. I met with the union leadership today and we talked about the fact because we have to look at a contract and this seniority and there's bumping rights and we have to look at all that before we can make a decision on specifics. And a lot could happen. We could have, you know, a month from now, three people leave and either get savings from those people or also cut the position and just not replace it. Or, or reduce the position also, like we're doing with the 10-month position for the guidance secretary. So there's, so that's the teaching services line. So I cut 65,000 out of that. Mickey and I went over utilities, as I said I would at the last, at the end of the last meeting with a fine-tooth comb. Mickey got six years of bills for electricity and for heat and looked at the trends over six years, the past six years, and looked at, we looked at all the kilowatt hour usage, averaged it out, looked at it that way. So Sarah used to just look at the previous year and we, we looked at it to get a trend over six years because it can be warm, it can be cold, it can, you know, on different years. Also the heating line and looked at, looked at that and we cut that down. So from line 3413, about 35,000, well, exactly 35,800 based on looking at six years of, of data and really looking closely at it. We haven't looked that closely at it over the time. The last was line 3422, which is a $20,000 cut from maintenance of buildings and specifically some electrical maintenance at the McDonald School. We did keep the electrical maintenance up. We did not cut it from the Spring Street School because we know that we've been having some electrical issues for the past two years. So we cut that down a little bit. Some maintenance from the middle, senior high school electrical and from the Howard School. And again, we looked at this over a period of years and are adjusting it based on a six-year period. Now, anything can happen, but we're trying to trim things down that don't necessarily directly affect teaching and learning. So that's why we feel comfortable with, with those cuts. So that's the area that we cut from. Any questions on that?
So these were just additional cuts since we met last time. So instead of, so you were able to bring it down from a 5.4.
Right here. I'll show you this now.
Down to 4.5.
So this is what you can see. The town appropriation last year was $12,573, $64. A level service budget, which means exact same services. So the increase is because of contracts, you know, teacher contracts, out-of-district placement contracts, service contracts, all those things. Okay? So the increase was, so the, the level service budget bought is a $13,259,42. That increase was 686,388, or 5.46%. That's what I had proposed or wanted to show you as level service last time. We cut the $120,000 in that area, which brings us to a revised budget of $13,138,602. We cut the $120,000 in that area, which brings us to a revised budget of $13,138,602,000. So that the proposed increase now is 565,538, or 4.5% increase. And then when you add in our choice money, our grants, and our revolving accounts, we are adding two, about 2.2 million. So the total revised amount is $15,536,650. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's the change that the $120,400 made.
Excuse me.
So if you look at the summary, again, this is what the, so on the table, that budget you just received, this is what the increase is, this is what the numbers are, and what you need to understand is, special ed out-of-district placements are increasing next year by Now remember that special ed out-of-district placements are not just tuition, they're also transportation.
But you don't get reimbursed.
You do not get reimbursed for transportation.
Okay.
This was also brought up with the Selectman that should, is there a way to combine with other communities for placements and carpool, if you will? And I, my response would be, and we'll talk about this when, because I'm sure they'll ask this question when we present to them on the 20th. Every year, at the end of the year, we have to go out to bid for special ed transportation. We have, it's not like our regular ed transportation, you know, our big buses that go around town, that's like a three- or five-year contract sometimes. But with special education, we go out to bid by route every single year. And in the, you know, six, seven years ago, we really only had one person, one company that would bid. So, we were sending these kids, you know, one kid here, one kid there, and it was costing a lot of money. Since that time, the North River Collaborative, which we are members of, have started their own transportation for special education out-of-district transportation, and they do that work for us. So we'll go out to bid for them, and they'll say, "Oh, you know what? Two kids from Bridgewater-Ranham are also going to this placement in Whitman, so we'll, we'll share the cost with Bridgewater-Ranham and you, and we'll do it that way." That first year we did that, we saved between $50,000 and $60,000 just in one year. So, we do try as many routes as possible to combine with other communities. There are times, though, that we may be the only person in the area sending a kid someplace, and North River would still do the transportation first, but we may not be able to hook up with another person or someone in another town for a couple of reasons. One, because it's out of the way to get that other person, because we're, we're coming from this direction. And the other thing is, you could still do that, but there's only so long that you can have a child, you know, on a bus going somewhere. So, you can't say, "Well, we can get, we can double up, but it's going to be a two-hour each way." So you wouldn't do that. But, that is something that we work on for that.
So, just to note that the total budget is actually, in our packets is correct. It's $15,415,850.
Oh, did I put the wrong one?
I think that's just the pre $120,000 cut number. Is that right?
Yeah, you quoted 15...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did the last one, sorry. Yep, yeah, it's 15,415,850. Yep.
Good catch.
Yep.
So, see, look at that. It's just going down by the second.
There you go. See? But this budget right here is, right here, the revised budget.
Yeah, that's correct.
But on the screen, it's...
Yep.
And for people listening, I know, in the Enterprise, make sure we can remember.
Just so, just so I understand, this is below level services, correct?
Yeah, we're coming.
Right.
Yes, we're coming under level services.
Level service...
By a point.
By a percent.
Well, you were even cutting a little bit of the 5.4%.
By a full percent.
You were moving things around for, because we needed to...
Yeah, level service is just that you have exactly the same services that you had the year before. And...
So, so the cut to the virtual classroom?
That's included.
That's already included, but that's not considered a cut in services?
Yep, it is.
It is, okay. So, yeah, I still hate doing that, because that's, out of all the cuts that we did, I feel like that's the one that directly is taking away something for the students.
Mm-hmm.
And that was a $9,000. Right? Yes. I'll hear someone.
How do we, when they tell us to do level service, I mean, are other departments faced with the same thing, that, I mean, we can't not increase our ELL because of mandates? So, that's, is that considered level service? Or when they tell us to do level service, do they realize they're telling us to cut before we even start? I guess that'd be...
I think the school budget, because it's so big, is a little different than probably other budgets. They don't have, other budgets, because they're small, they don't have as many moving parts as we have. We can't control who moves into town, who needs an IEP, who moves in. We just had a child the other day move in and doesn't speak any, any English, and it's like the third or fourth one we've had, just within the school year. We got a lot over the summer. And, we have to give those services. So, I think there's, you can't control things that happen in school as much as you can probably control the changes in other departments, because you're not, you're just working with people that work there.
Payroll, right.
You know? It's not, I mean, our services have to change depending on who moves into your town.
They're always modified.
And things like that. So, I don't, you really can't compare that, I don't think.
So, that's, I mean, some of these cuts, if, we're cutting ourselves so close that we have no room for error, and the problem is, there's error every year. There's something that happens that we didn't anticipate. And so, if we continue to go down and get this to a number, because a number is what people look at, are we really doing ourselves any service to our town by saying, "Okay, we got it to 4.5%, but what we really need to, to run a proper budget is, is more than this." I mean, I just look at it, no matter what size your budget is, if you cut it close, you spend the majority of your time looking at your budget to seeing if you can afford something. So instead of saying, "We need this program, and let's pay for it, let's do it," or, you know, "In your house, we need, you know, a new hot water heater," instead of saying, "We need it and we get it," we're looking at the budget and saying, "Can we afford it?" And we're spending a lot of time, or what it feels like a lot of time to me, is trying to look at the money and the dollars instead of doing what we're supposed to be doing, and that's providing education to every student in the town. So, I mean, I understand...
That's budgeting, and that's town budgeting, you know? I think everyone, it's, it's everywhere, it's...
It's town budgeting, but it's not, I mean, we're running, it's a business too, and the school's a business, and, you know, I, my experience with small businesses, with a home business, with my own personal budget, when you cut it close, you spend more time figuring out, "I'm going to pay this today, and I'm going to wait to do this," and you end up costing yourself money. I have perfect examples in a small business in the car wash. We don't replace a garage door, because it's $20,000 to replace the garage door. So, the, the thing frees, and it scratches the car. So we pay out thousands of dollars in damages to people's car because we didn't have the money to budget for that. Like, that's obviously not an educational example, but it's an example of what happens. It actually costs money when we try to cut corners. And, I don't know, like, this, and I, I think our town has done a great job of being conservative, and why we still have so many great things in this town, because we haven't said, "Let's just raise taxes like crazy and spend on whatever you want to spend." But, these things that we're cutting are things that we're using. It's not things that we're not using. So, and it, to Donna's point, it hurts to cut $9,000 of a program that, that kids are benefiting from. I know it's only $9,000, but, yeah, it just all, so that we can get to a number. It really, we really want to get to the services. And my fear is, when the town says, "Do a level service budget," they really believe this is level service, that, that they're not trying to cut us either. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't think they're saying, "Do a level service," and then when we come back at, you know, 6%, I think, I don't think they're thinking we gave them level service. Do you know what I mean? Like, and that's where the education is different than the other departments.
Mm-hmm. I mean, you know, again, this is why the state, there's many organizations state really trying to change legislation, change that Chapter 70 formula. Right now, that Chapter 70 formula, which is the money earmarked for schools that goes to a town, does not, in the formula, there's nothing about how much, how many special ed placements you have, how many ELL kids you have, what your health insurance costs are, and so on and so on. None of those things are in the formula because that formula was written in 1993. We didn't have as many severely disabled students in 1993. We didn't have as many English language learners in 1993. The world has changed, the formula has to change to catch up with the world. That's why we're trying to change it, so that we can get funding for these types of things. The governor's budget right now, in our Chapter 70, has an increase of about $350,000 in there, which would be nice if it could cover that $321,000, but we still need $244,000 for the remainder of the budget. So, out of that 4.5% increase, 2.5% is for something we can't control because, A, we've had some move-ins of, of kids into the town that have, that are already placed out of district, so we have to pick those costs up. We have some changes in placements because their needs become more severe. We have an increase in some transportation costs because we had to change placements, so it's going somewhere else. So, it's, the increase in those out-of-district placements are 2.5%. I can't touch that because it's an IEP, it's the law. I have to, if it's, if it's, a kid needs that, we have to cut, we have to keep that.
So technically that...
So, then the remainder of the budget, that's what we have to, you know, cut out of.
Technically, that 350 is coming back. That's not in our 2.2 that we contribute, right? That goes to the town.
No, no, Chapter 70 money goes directly to the town.
So technically, if that was to go through, which we can't guarantee that, we're only asking for a 2.5% increase because the town is going to be reimbursed, or a 2% increase actually at this time, if we, if we were to go to the 4.5.
That's not how it works.
It's not how it works, I know, but they're technically getting the money back in the Chapter 70.
Molly has a point. The town's getting the money, unfortunately, we're not.
Well...
For the percentage, if we're, if we're just talking numbers here, then percentage-wise, we're...
If we could get an increase in Chapter 70, if that goes through, what happens is, you know, the town administrator and the Selectman look and they say, "Okay, how much growth did we get? What was, how many, how much in taxes did we get? What did we get in excise, you know, whatever? What did we get for municipal aid from the state? What did we get for Chapter 70 from the state?" All that stuff goes into the town general fund. And then they look at it and say, "All right, well, everyone put in their budgets, so how can we be as fair as possible to give everyone what they ask for?" But, the pot may be lower, and it usually is lower than what every department asks for. So then they say, "Well, we'll give you this, you this, you might have to cut, you got to cut another $10,000, you have to cut $50,000, you have to cut 3,000," you know, because it goes into a collective pot. It, it doesn't go directly to the school.
Right, no, I understand that, but when we talk about if there's an increase by 350,000...
Well, an increase by 350,000 is a good increase because that pot rises up, and when the pot rises up, everyone rises up too. But they don't, well, put it this way, if Chapter 70 went down by 350,000, would we expect them to come to the school and say, "Well, we're going to cut you by 350"?
Right. No, of which they haven't either, and that's the thing. I mean, we've always, and I think that's a great part of our town, we've always worked together, but the bottom line is, other towns have, you know, make up for it. Like, I agree with, we need to, you know, lobby for these increases and the structuring.
Yeah, we do.
But in the meantime, as a town, we're responsible for taking care of these costs and educating the children. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line, so...
Well, and you can see, the, that 2.5% is for something that we have to do, that's just bigger this year, maybe next year it won't be. Last year it wasn't, you know, an increase overall. The rest of our budget, every other thing in our budget, is only a 2% increase.
Because we've made cuts.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, this is, it's hard, because we, like, we talked about last meeting, our per, per pupil expenditure is on the bottom in the state. And it was afterwards, one of the finance committee members asked me, we were having a one-on-one conversation about, "Well, what would we have, what, what don't we have in West Bridgewater? Because it seems like we have everything we need. We do a great job, and educators do a great job." And he really caught me off guard, because it's been so long since someone said, "What else do you want?" Because we don't ever have that conversation. We always have these conversations of, "How can we do, yeah, how can we do more with less? How many different positions have, you know, more than one role? You have more than one role." I mean, everyone is doing more than one job, which is great, and something that makes our community great. But then at the same time, like, I think we need to think about, you know, a lot of these times we put, because of the person, because of the educator, they can take on an extra role or a stipend, but we may not always have that, that ability. I mean, we need to also look at what, who we need in certain roles, not who can do three roles or two roles. And so, it was interesting when he asked, I, I, only thing I could come up with off the top of my head was a net for the soccer field, and I'm like, I didn't want to say that out loud, because that's not really, you know, the first thing we would want to spend money on necessarily, because we're making cuts to educational services. But, later we had a conversation about it, Dr. Oakley and I, about the different things, like, if we could, like, what, what could, what would we add? And there were, there were legitimate things on there, like a literacy specialist, a math specialist, a school psychologist, an additional school psychologist, because we have a school psychologist now, but adjustment counselors, which we don't have in our, we have one? We don't have any, we don't have any?
We don't have any.
Okay, so adjustment counselors, a curriculum director, data specialist, which I know, I mean, it's, and it's not just, you know, our classroom teachers that are doing more than one role, or our administrators that are doing more than one role, it's, it's everyone, it's all of our staff members. So, I mean, those were just, you know, a tech, a tech integrationist, which I'm like, "What is that?" But I guess schools have those, we don't. So, I mean, I, I want to be a team player in our town, I don't want to go in with this huge number that we can't afford, but at the same time, I don't, I don't think we're doing a service by cutting, by continuing to cut, and we're not helping ourselves. And it's not like if we say we cut this year, that next year, we're going to, that means we're not going to ask for more. The bottom line is, this is, this is a problem that we're going to have every year because we need more. It's not like we're just asking for it because it's fun.
I think one of the things that could do this, and I don't think there's enough of it that happens, especially with Dr. Oakley speaking, that she spoke to Selectman Marrera, people need to watch that February 25th meeting as we detailed what the costs are, what our per, per pupil expenditures are, and where the money actually goes. Instead of just saying, "Well, you're not going to get that," or, "You're not going to get that," or, "You don't need this." Watch that 20, the meeting on the 25th to see where the money is actually going. Because if you look at the numbers, 2.5% of that, we have no control of anywhere, so we're already starting at a level here, and then we can't level off the 2%, it just, it doesn't work by the numbers. And I wish, instead of everybody, or people calling Dr. Oakley saying, you know, different things, they would watch the meetings, or they would ask questions, come to our meetings and ask the budgetary questions that, you know, "Why, why, why?" And give them the solid answers. But, to Mrs. Smith's point, you know, we all get the fact the town is very physically responsible and has done, done a very good job, but there are costs that are incurring here as ELL and special education become bigger parts of the school system and bigger issues. So, I guess my main thing would be, I wish people would watch that February 25th meeting. Okay, do we have anything else?
Well, you have to...
Yep, no, I know.
Make a decision on what we're presenting on the 20th and 21st.
Can I ask a question about the utilities?
Yeah.
So, this year, our operating is at 283, is that correct? That's what we've...
That's what we've, that's what we've spent this year, or what we expect to spend this year? I'm sorry, I, I know.
That's operating, that's what we're spending now.
Okay, and does that project it out to the end of June?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, we'd like to make a motion, um.
Yeah.
Like to make, if we could make a motion here on a revised budget of $15,415,850 to submit to the town for their approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm going to go now.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I'd like to see that 9,000 for the virtual learning added back in as well.
Mark, is that a big asset for the kids?
It is, and 9,000 would be about 25 to 30 slots for students for semester courses. It would be about 60 last year with the budget last year.
And they all were filled, right? I mean, you said.
Right. So, my other comment is, Dr. Oakley, I would like to just thank you for making those further cuts, and really, and as well with the business manager, with Mickey. And I understand that through your, obviously, your experience and so forth, that you are making that educated, you know, decision about making further cuts. But if the town is asking for level services, then we're taking that 9,000 out, and you're also even proposing in your further cuts to get down to a reasonable amount, down to the 4.5, you are affecting teaching services, and I understand that. But, the direct impact on the kids is not something that I support. So, that would be my two cents, which is really a negative two right now, based on this budget.
Okay.
I totally agree, Mrs. Sullivan. Um, I'd like to see that 9,000 added back in.
Do you have a suggestion of what I should replace it with? Because I really think the 4.5 is what I was asked by the.
What would that make it?
You were asking.
It's just, where do you want me to get the 9, you want me to find somewhere else to cut?
Can we just, can we just take it out of the utility line and put it back in?
I mean, we spent.
You mean, cut 9,000 more in utilities?
Then we would be budgeting less than we spent already, which that.
I don't want to cut 9,000 more out of teacher services.
Nope.
I don't think it happens.
What would that make it? 5.1?
I just think it should be.
What would it be?
It's $15,429,850 would be the, the new total.
It's too big a math for me.
What's the percentage?
I mean, this isn't going to be level serviced anyway. Even if you add the VHS in, it's still not level service.
It'd be what?
Nope.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're at like 0.5.
So, we'd be at 4.6?
No, 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 we'd be at 4.51.
Oh, 4.51. So, it's essentially still, with all your efforts, Dr. Oakley, it would still be something that.
Do we get to do the average?
We would support putting it over to the selectmen and to the finance committee, or no? I mean, that's, that's the percentage, so, what the business manager was just saying, it would be 4.51%.
What?
That is a direct impact on these students.
Right, that's what I hate.
Well, the teaching services do too.
And the teacher services. Well, utilities and the maintenance aren't a direct impact on the students.
There's a chance we may need to.
Except for utilities and maintenance goes up, we take it out, we freeze the budget, so, yes, I mean, it's.
And this is, yeah, I mean, this is what you're going to propose to the FinCom and Selectmen, they may cut us more.
Right.
But I, I don't think we can go in also with already having some stuff cut. If they're going to ask us, cut us more, they're going to have to understand that student services and teaching services are going to be the next things that are going to be cut, and if.
More so.
Right, exactly. So, this is what we need to operate, this is what we need to operate, and it's still not enough. Okay?
You have to make a motion?
Yep, so, we're going to revise the motion to make the new total, $15,420, I'm sorry, $424,850 to bring to Town Hall, Selectmen and the FinCom. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm going with no still, it's my thing tonight.
So, we pass unanimously?
Can I just?
No, 4 to 1.
4 to 1, sorry, I'm sorry, yes, 4 to 1.
Just to be clear, so, you're not in support, you don't want to cut it from the 5.4, is that? I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
Molly wants to go in at the, at the 5.4.
That's what I'm saying, she doesn't want to cut it from the 5.4.
Yep.
I actually, I don't want to go in with a number. What I want to go in with is what we need, and so, and I know that's not, not realistic, and that's why I know by my one vote, I'm not going to stop this, so, I'm in favor of not stopping the budget from going forward in this process, but I just am good conscious, again, it's, we're going in with a number, and I understand that's part of what we have to do, but it, it's not, it's not, it's not comfortable to me, so that's why I'm going with a no.
And I think we need to tell them that really, level service is 5.46, like, that's.
I think they saw that in the paper.
But it was even 7 before that.
But they didn't see the evidence behind it.
They're right, they don't, they don't.
So, that's the point, I think that Mr. Flynn's reiterating.
We're not submitting our budget through the Rockland Enterprise.
Correct. With all due respect, or even through Dr. Oakley's phone call with Selectman Marrera.
Right.
I mean, thank you for that time, but again, you, you know, here you are, again, having another role to play when Selectman Marrera and the other two select people should either watch the, you know, meeting from last month, or be prepared for our formal presentation to go in and present our case, and not do it through the enterprise, or through rumors, or anything like that. Wait till our formal presentation. So, that's all I can say.
I, I, I believe that you're 100% correct, so, I also believe that where our budget is the largest budget within the town, other than the town budget, that, that the three selectmen should, if possible, make arrangements for one or two of them to come to our meetings during budget time, and get a better understanding of what we're up against, and a better understanding of where we're going because of special ed services and ELL.
I can tell you that.
Because it's getting scary, and, and.
It's been scary.
And it's, it, yeah, it's been scary, and it's.
It is scary.
And like Dr. Oakley just said, another one came in the door within the last two weeks. We're not going to stop that.
And they very well might have watched it.
Well, I can tell you that.
We can't put a fence up around the town of West Bridgewater, it's not going to happen.
Selectman Kinnahan did watch it.
Okay, that's great.
Awesome.
Did he have any feedback? Does anybody know?
He didn't, I just know that, I just know that he did watch it. He watched it last year too, so, he is, I will say, very good at that, he does look at those things. And, so, I don't know if by now, the other two have watched it, but I know for a fact that, um.
That's good to know.
Selectman Kinnahan did watch it, and he watched the whole thing.
And in their defense, I mean, we're, that's why we're elected to do this, because we're elected to look at the budget. They're elected to look at the big picture, just as, I don't, I don't know what they're up to, I mean, that's, like, we all need to, to concentrate on our roles too. I mean, obviously, we have to work together and understand each other, but, like, that's why we're here, to vet this out.
Right, and, most importantly, at our formal meeting, you know, our presentation is when we're going to educate them, because it is overwhelming, this process, it's most certainly overwhelming. So, again, to their, you know, credit, they have to digest a lot of information, and I respect that. So, just give us the chance to educate them and do it in a more controlled setting versus reading about it through the paper, that's all.
All right, any further discussion? Are we good? Okay, I believe we are at warrant subcommittee report, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes, thank you so much. So, the following warrants were issued and paid under the bill warrants dated March 14th, 2019, in the amount of $75,339.09. Bill warrant dated March 7th, 2019, in the amount of $101,612.4. A bill warrant dated February 28th, 2019, in the amount of $123,495.37. And lastly, a bill warrant dated February 21st, 2019, in the amount of $42,313.68. And I also had signed off on two payroll warrants, one dated March 7th, 2019, in the amount of $459,663.33. And then a payroll warrant dated February 22nd, 2019, in the amount of $520,049.79. And as always, all warrants are public record, and once they are signed, they are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Do we have any takers? Not seeing any, we'll move on to our other business. Announcements district-wide. School, uh, school council meetings, Middle Senior High School, April 2nd at 2:30 PM. The Howard School, March 11th at 2:45 PM in the conference room. Spring Street School, March 13th at 2:45 PM. The Rozell McDonald School, March 25th at 3:30 PM. PTO meeting, March 26th at 7:00 PM in the Howard Library. The Athletic Boosters will meet March 13th at 7:00 PM. And CPAC will be March 20th at 6:00 PM. At the Middle Senior High School, March 14th, festival performance at 6:30 PM. March 21st, vaping information night at 6:00 PM. March 21st, American Red Cross blood drive from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. March 26th, World Culture Night at 6:00 PM. April 5th, the Spring Musical Production from 7:00 to 9:30 PM. April 6th, the Spring Musical Production from 2:00 PM to 4:30, and again, from 7:00 to 9:30. Do we know the, the name of the play?
Mama Mia.
Mama Mia, very good, very good, thank you, Mr. Boardwell. At the Howard School, Monday, I'm sorry, March 20th, Pitcher Day. March 22nd, Museum of Science, Now Here This, Grade 4 PTO sponsored. April 2nd and 3rd, Grade 4 ELA in MCAS. April 4th and 5th, Grade 5 ELA in MCAS. April 5th, Museum of Science Electromagnesium, Grade 4, PTO sponsored. At the Rozell McDonald School, April, I'm sorry, March 28th, Benjamin Franklin, Grade 3, Presentation, PTO sponsored. April 3rd, Wingmasters, North American Birds of Prey, Grade 1 Presentation, PTO sponsored. April 6th, Easter Bunny Breakfast, 9 to 11:00 AM, PTO sponsored. At the Spring Street School, March 18th and 19th, Life Touch Class Pitchers. March 22nd, All Hands Drumming, kindergarten, 11:00 AM to 2:15, 2:15 PM, PTO sponsored. On March 26th, 27th, and 28th, is kindergarten registration. On March 25th through the 29th, PK, celebrating commu, our community, visits from parents showing their occupations. Our next regular scheduled commi, uh, school committee meeting will be Monday, April 8th at 2, uh, on 2019th at 6:30 here in the Learning Commons. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, um, but we're also going to ma, uh, go, head into executive committee meeting with respect to the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, we will not reopen into open session.
And also, I just, for, um, purposes of, of the executive session, to move into executive session as per Chapter 39, Section 23B, Paragraph 3 of the open, open meeting law, and not to return to open session thereafter.
Do we have a motion?
That's it.
That's it?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
You need to take a roll call.
Roll.
Aye.
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 All in favor? Aye, thank you, good night.